The Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting will begin in 10 seconds.
Good evening. We welcome you to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners meeting for December 20th, 2020. We'll call it to order. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Present.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Commissioner Albright.
Here.
Commissioner Coulson.
Here.
Commissioner McLawhorn.
Here.
Commissioner Nunley.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Here.
Everyone is present.
Thank you. Now we will have invocation and pledge, and County Manager will do the pledge if we stand for invocation. Your Lord, we thank you for this day. We ask your guidance and your blessing to come for us this meeting, that what we do here will be in the best interest for the Pitt, for the citizens of Pitt County. These and all blessing we ask in your name. Amen.
Please place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chairman, we have one admission to admit on the agenda on closed session. We did have a need for personnel item, but we're taking that off, so we just have attorney-client privilege only.
What did you say?
Just to, to remove the, the personnel item from closed session and only have attorney-client, so if the agenda could be approved in that manner.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I would like, I would like for us to remove the resolution for the sanctuary and development, and it doesn't fit Pitt County's needs right now, and maybe we'll, it's produced in Texas for maybe what they need, and maybe we can come back with it after the holidays with one that would fit more appropriately for Pitt County.
Madam Chairman, you have handed by Commissioner McLawhorn.
Very good.
Yes. I'd like to second that motion.
Okay. It's been moved in second that we will remove the item number.
Item number under items for discussion, item number one.
Item number, number one, under discussion. It's been, been moved in second that we remove item number one on the item for discussion. Are you ready to vote, Madam Clerk?
Does that also include the removal of the personnel item under closed session? Are we going to do that separately?
We can do both. Can we do both?
I guess if that's included in their motion.
If that's the.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved in proper second that we remove the closed session, the personnel items on the closed session, and also the item one for the sanctuary counties.
Okay. Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
No.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
No, I would also like to add, I think it's sad that we can't even have some discussion about ways to protect our businesses, but no, my vote's no.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes 72.
All right, so that has been removed from the agenda. Now we have a motion to approve the agenda with the, the removals with the, okay.
I think your motion was inclusive of approving that agenda, so.
Okay.
Yeah, they combined it into one.
Yeah. So you're ready to quote, quote addresses to the board.
Okay, so that says now. All right, so the agenda stands approved with those deleted from the agenda. Now we will move to public address to the board. Listen, Mr. Manager, do we have?
Yes, Madam Chairman. Woman, we have four people who have submitted written statements, and I'll read those if the board will allow me. First one is from Mary Smith. The topic is subjects Sanctuary County Resolution. Says Commissioner White is proposing a resolution declaring Pitt County as a, quote, "sanctuary county," allowing opening all business without restrictions or limitations. The resolution also states that individuals have a right to work and run businesses, quote, "without the undue government overreach, coercion, and control," end quote. This resolution is based upon a resolution enacted in Eastland County, Texas, population 18,322, with positive COVID cases 730 and 60 deaths. Texas has 1.5 million positive cases and 25,841 deaths. Pitt County has 10,267 positive cases and 69 deaths. North Carolina has a total of 48,000 positive cases and 6,255 deaths. Comparing the amounts of deaths between Eastland County, Texas to Pitt County is obvious that the, quote, "sanctuary county," end quote, initiative in Texas was a failure. COVID-19 is not a hoax. It is a killer, and allowing individuals to decide the fate of other citizens, other Pitt County citizens, is a deadly idea. It is time that everyone take responsibility for keeping everyone in Pitt County safe, even if it means they have, even if it means they may have to make some sacrifices. Thanks to our governor's leadership, North Carolina has a two-thirds of the amount of positive cases and three-fourths of the amount of deaths compared to Texas. This resolution should not be passed, and it will have deadly consequences. Next one is from Mary Yance. Topic, COVID restrictions. It's addressed commissioners. When voting on the matters related to COVID-19, please make sure science, concern for public health, and concern for our public, local healthcare system and healthcare workers to be your priorities. With COVID-19 cases surging, it is time to support Governor Cooper's attempt to protect North Carolinians' lives and healthcare. Next, we have a statement from Candace Burton, and it says, "I would like the county commissioners to know that I strongly object to becoming a COVID sanctuary. Please do not put health and lives second to economics," or, please do not, yeah, "please do not put health and lives second to economics." Next one is from Erin Burton. Says, "If our county is declared a sanctuary county, what are the impacts, if any, for COVID funding at the state or federal level? Are local leaders from Viden ECU and Health Department, Health Department involved in these, these discussions? I've lived in Pitt County since 2003, all my adult life. I've worked to watch our community grow in so many ways. I feel like many people who live here will not do the simple task of wearing a mask or refrain, refrained from gathering in, in indoor groups as it is. You have churches, gyms, church-run after-school programs slash childcare facilities and other businesses already not requiring masks as COVID numbers are increasing. Declaring our county as a sanctuary is not in the best interest of the health and safety of our community. Thank you for your time." The last one is from Eloise Ironmonger. Just had the three words in the statement, object sanctuary, object COVID sanctuary with three exclamation marks. And Madam Chairman, woman, that's all we have.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Next, we will do the presentations, starting with the recognition of 2020 Governor's Volunteer Service Award recipients for Pitt County. Alice King.
Yes, we have Alice Keane here for that.
Good evening. It's nice to be here with you tonight, and especially to bring some good news. I think we're all ready for some good news. This is our 2020 Governor's Volunteer Service Award recognition, and our committee, our county, is allowed to work with the governor's office in selecting up to 10 outstanding volunteers to represent Pitt County with the Governor's Volunteer Service Awards. Our local committee consisted of Jennifer Congleton, she's an administrator of chaplaincy and volunteer services at Viden Medical Center, Dwayne Cooper, Director of Community Impact and Communications with our United Way of Pitt County, and Diane White, who is currently the Director of Farnborough Parks and Recreation. Want to thank those committee members for working with us on the volunteer nominations. At this point, I would like to rep, recognize eight volunteers that will be receiving Governor's Award for Volunteer Service, and I'll show our audience what that looks like, and also a very nice pen from the governor's office that says Governor, Governor's Volunteer Service Award for 2020. Our first recipient is Amira Hajazee. Amira volunteers with the Lutheran Services of Carolina in disaster preparedness, response, and recovery activities. With her contagious smile and laughter, she has prepared emergency supplies for shelters, attended and presented at hurricane disaster mitigation events, and taught citizens how to be better prepared for times of disasters. At 13 years of age, Amira is a true inspiration to all, and Amira's out there watching us right now, so thank you, Amira. Second recipient is Terry King. Terry is a phenomenal volunteer at Viden Medical Center. Every Tuesday and Thursday morning, he can be found on the fifth floor of the East Carolina Heart Institute, directing guests and visitors to their rooms and helping with clinical staff discharge patients. Terry has given approximately 450 hours per year for the last 10 years at Viden Medical Center. Thank you so much, Terry, for your commitment and dedication. Third recipient is Dr. Richard Luck, and he also volunteers at Viden Medical Center, has done that for six years, and spends two days a week assisting with patient escort. He helps the clinical staff with patient discharges, takes visitors across the very large campus, and assists with new volunteer orientation. He has shared over 450 hours per year, and he's a special mentor to many of the college volunteers. Thank you, Dr. Luck, for all of your service. Next recipient is Russell Lauren, and Russell shares many hours each year coaching soccer for Pitt County Community Schools and Recreation. He takes the time to teach the soccer players new skills and how to work as a team. He's been known to pay registration for children that cannot afford it, and somehow he manages to find a slightly used pair of soccer cleats if the child does not have one. Following the season, Russell remains in touch with his players, encouraging them to do well in school and continue improving their soccer skills. Russell, thank you so much for your years of service and the years you're going to give in the future as a soccer coach. Our next recipient is Barbara Woodland. She retired from Viden Medical Center and came back to be a volunteer two or three days a week, working in the main lobby and the surgery admissions, putting smiles on the faces of guests, patients, and staff's faces with her sense of humor and great way of working with people. She has outstanding organizational skills. That helps in completing clerical and administrative tasks, and she's a leader among other volunteers. In the past four years at Viden Medical Center, she has clocked in over 2,200 hours of volunteer service. Thank you so much, Barbara, for all you're doing. Next recipient is a husband and wife team, Mr. and Ms. George and Irene Mills. They have provided karaoke with George and Irene Mills at McGregor Downs Health and Rehabilitation Center for the past eight years. Using high-tech equipment, George and Irene created an activity that combines karaoke with the music that residents know and enjoy, not your typical karaoke music. They build relationships with all residents as well as volunteers and staff. To the residents, they are the people who care and visit regularly. To the youth, they are the confident and talented older couple with the cool equipment, and to the staff, they are the partners in enriching the body, mind, and spirit of each of the residents. Thank you so much for all you do at McGregor Downs Health and Rehabilitation Center. Each year, we're also able to nominate one paid volunteer coordinator, because if you've noticed, most volunteer coordinators spend far more than the 40 hours they get paid for on their, on their job. This year, we'd like to rec, recognize Terry F. Edwards. She created the volunteer program at McGregor Downs Health and Rehabilitation Center back in 1978. For over 40 years, she has developed partnerships with agencies, organizations, churches, educational institutions, and individuals in the community to provide the most comprehensive activities and events possible for the residents of the center. From teenagers to seniors, she has trained, inspired, and nurtured people to share their time and talents with each other and with others in their community. Terry believes that everybody has something valuable to offer. She sees it as her responsibility to give that opportunity to people looking for fulfillment in their lives. Terry, you've made a tremendous difference in our community, and we say thank you so much. We were also, as a committee, able to select one of our volunteers to go in a pool in competition for the Governor's Medallion Award for Volunteer Service. That is the highest award given by the governor's office for volunteer service. There are 20 volunteers selected from all across the state of North Carolina to receive the medallion award, and in most years, those 20 recipients are invited to Raleigh for a special reception with the governor. However, as we know, COVID has changed so many things in our lives, and they were not able to go to Raleigh for reception this year. But we'd like to recognize Kennedy Phipps as one of the 20 medallion award winners for the state of North Carolina. And I think Kennedy is listening in. She has zoomed into our meeting, and I'll tell you a little bit about Kennedy before we let her make a comment. Kennedy was a tremendous volunteer throughout her high school years, thereby making a very positive impact on the entire community. Kennedy's work and leadership have been focused in five major areas. The first is SAD, Students Against Destructive Decisions. Secondly, she's worked in the children's ministry in her church. She was a volunteer ambassador at Viden Medical Center. If that wasn't enough, she also coached a little girl's six-year-old softball team, and very importantly, she worked with the Pitt County Detention Center to help fathers that are incarcerated know how to better interact and communicate with their children. Now, you'll remember that the work at the detention center was one of the three programs that was a part of our All-America County Award, and Kennedy was involved in some of that work. She has provided leadership for her peers and been a positive role model for all ages through her dedication and commitment to helping others learn new skills, see the need to make better decisions, and challenge themselves to make a sustainable change in their community. We are very proud of Kennedy for her exemplary service and congratulate her on receiving the very prestigious Governor's Medallion Award for Volunteer Service. And just had to show you this beautiful award, this medallion, that Kennedy, you're seeing this for the first time, but we look forward to hanging this around your neck in the next couple of days. So congratulations, Kennedy, and thank you for all the work and all the things you've put in place in our community that will live on for years to come.
Thank you so much, Ms. Keane. I would just quickly like to give a little thank you to Ms. Alice Keane, to Mrs. Bridgers from South Central, and to the county commissioners for putting my name forward and for seeing something in myself that I may not have always seen, and also just for giving me this opportunity to learn and grow. Out of the things that Ms. Keane had listed, you know, I've really found my passion for mental health and what that means to me, and I now am able to carry that into college with me at NC State. I'm a Parks Scholar there, and Pitt County is just a really special place, and I'm just very thankful for all the opportunity that it has given me and will give others in the future. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Alice. On behalf of the Pitt County Commissioners, we are very proud of all of the recipients, and especially Kennedy, for being one of 20 recipients of the Governor's Medallion Award across the state. And we also thank the committee for participating and working with these recipients. So again, on behalf of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, we are, we thank you, and we are very proud of you. Thank you. Okay, next, we will have a resolution of appreciation for Chairman Melvin McLawhorn.
Yes, Madam Chairman. If we can get the board to approve both, item number two, number three, both resolutions, then we can go forward with reading, presenting those.
I will entertain a motion to approve the, the two resolutions.
Chris Nunley has his hand up. Mr. Nunley.
Chris.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve resolution of appreciation from both Chairman Melvin McLawhorn and Vice Chairman Tom Coulson.
Then you have Commissioner Albright.
Commissioner Albright?
Second that, please.
Okay, it's been, been moved in second that we approve the resolutions for Chairman Melvin McLawhorn and Vice Chairman Tom Coulson. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
As the recipient of three, I would like to ask that it not be read and that we move on to item, was it four or D?
Okay. Commissioner McLawhorn?
Otherwise, yes.
Okay. Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. At this time, we'll hear the manager read the resolution for Chairman Melvin McLawhorn.
Thank you, Chairwoman Huggins. So this year's a little bit different with COVID in our operating procedures. We normally would have everybody here at the dais in the meeting room, and we would actually be honoring and presenting this to the former chairman and vice chairman in person in front, but obviously, we're in a virtual environment. So if Madam Chairman would like me to proceed, I will read the resolution.
Please do.
So down in front, we do have two frame copies of it. I don't know if the cameras can catch that or not, but that's what I will be reading from. It's also in the genders, the commissioner's agenda package on page six. It's entitled, Office of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners Resolution of Appreciation Honoring Melvin McLawhorn as Chairman. Whereas Melvin McLawhorn has say, has served faithfully and honorably as chairman of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners from December 2019 to December 2020, and whereas Melvin McLawhorn has provided the board commissioners with steadfast leadership and commitment as chairman, whereas the board of commissioners expresses their appreciation to Melvin McLawhorn for his guidance, organization, leadership skills, and commitment to serving during his tenure as chairman, whereas under Chairman McLawhorn's tenure, Pitt County was named an All-America County by the National Civic League, being the only county in the state and the nation to earn this designation in, in the year 2020, and whereas under Chairman McLawhorn's leadership, Pitt County aided the citizens in response to the COVID-19 pandemic through public health's leadership, as well as other county departments and outside entities who help handle COVID-19 matters, and whereas under Chairman McLawhorn's tenure, the tenure ongoing radio and paging project came to a final close with the board receiving a final closeout report concerning the $10 million system consisting of five radio communication towers and six paging towers, and whereas under Chairman McLawhorn's leadership, steps were taken to begin addressing broadband, broadband needs of unserved and underserved areas of Pitt County that might be served via partnership with a private broadband entity in conjunction with great grant funding, and whereas under Chairman McLawhorn's leadership, the board of commissioners transitioned its 15-member Industrial Development Commission board to a reconstituted five-member, five-member board with the intent to also change the operation of the IDC into a Department of County Government beginning next fiscal year, and whereas under Chairman McLawhorn's leadership, the removal of the Confederate monument at the Pitt County Courthouse was realized with an intent to find a more fitting and proper place for it to be displayed, and whereas Chairman McLawhorn was instrumental in passing the resolution declaring racism a public health crisis, and whereas Chairman McLawhorn's, under Chairman McLawhorn's leadership, the board of commissioners agreed to formally examine the creation and exploratory committee and create the exploratory committee for the formation of a human relations commission for Pitt County, and whereas due to COVID-19 meeting constraints, Chairman McLawhorn successfully and effectively led the board as chairman using the virtual meeting environment via Zoom meetings, and whereas during his tenure, the chairman was also an integral part of Pitt County Government by serving on various boards and commissions such as the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Metropolitan Planning Organization, both NPO and TAC, alternate to the Rural Planning Organization, RPO-TAC, the Pitt Area Transit Advisory Board, and the Viden Medical Center Joint Policy Review Committee. Now, therefore, it be resolved, the members of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners commend Melvin McLawhorn for his efficient leadership and outstanding service as chairman of the Pitt County Board of Commissioners for County Leader of Year 2020, adopted this 21st day of December 2020, signed by our clerk, Kimberly W. Hines, and signed by our, our vice chairman, Tom Coulson, at the time. Yeah, Pierre, he's dropped out. Would you like to come back to him later on and report items?
Yeah, we'll come back to him. Okay, we'll move on to items for report. I believe we have Dr. Silverne to speak. Is he available?
Yes, no, he's with us on, again, virtually.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening, Pitt County Commissioners. Give me a second to share my screen. And... Click one more. There we go. All right. My cell. It's actually distracting. I was recently, I was preparing a talk for the Public Health Interest Group at the Brody School of Medicine, and I came across this quote from a fictional character, but I thought it fit the COVID time incredibly well, and that is that sometimes the only choices you have are bad ones, but you still have to choose. And I kind of feel like that's been the story of COVID this whole year. We'll move on and review our data with you. Over the past 14 days, we've had 1,591 cases. That's an average of 111.5 cases per day. That's actually down a hair from where it was a week or two ago, but still riding very high comparatively. If we look at that as a rate, and again, I've been expressing that for us locally as a rate per thousand, we're at about 8.6. If I were to look back to October before the start of the surge, we were in the low threes, we're 3.1, 3.2 cases per thousand. So we're up about five and a half cases per thousand residents in the county over the past two months. If you look at the state website, and the state website's gotten very, very busy, so I chose not to show that to you, but it is there if you want to look at it. If you look at it again, and by the, they show it two ways. They show it by date of report and by date of collection. If you look at it by date of collection, it almost appears that there's some plateauing of this surge, but I think it's too early to say that with any confidence. Our total cases today, sorry, in Pitt County, we have accumulated 10,332 cases total. That represents about 5.6% of the county population that we know to have been infected or to currently be infected with COVID-19. Our estimated recovered cases are 8,672, and that represents about 84% of our cases today. Unfortunately, and sadly, we have accumulated 69 deaths to date, and that gives us a case fatality rate as of today of 0.7, unrounded at 0.67, which is pretty flat. The range for this throughout the epidemic has been anywhere from 0.5 to 0.7, better than the state and better than the national average, although still more than we would like. As I've mentioned before, the cumulative unage-adjusted death rate for influenza is generally reported as .1. So right now, we would say that COVID is seven times more fatal than influenza. Our percentage of tests returning positive as of today was 10.6%. We have recently been up running 11%, so that is actually down a hair today. And that would be a good thing. Anytime that goes down, that's a good thing. Want to show you the data breakdown, and again, the state slides tend to be kind of busy. So what I've done is pulled these graphs from the NC COVID report or NC Ed's report that I get every week from the state. This first chart shows, again, our cases by earliest illness onset and congregate living. And we know there are about 61 congregate living facilities in Pitt County that we are aware of. The blue portion of the bar represents the not in or unknown as far as being living in a congregate setting, a long-term care facility, nursing home, something like that. The orange or salmon color at the base represents the cases in those facilities. You can see we've been through a few areas where we've had some higher times than others. With the testing that we do for staff or that is done for staff and for residents, and the ongoing follow-up of these cases, that number is really very low. You can see that small salmon-colored bar has gotten very small, almost nonexistent last week in the data. So at this point, we're doing a reasonable job, a good job of keeping this infection out of those long-term care facilities, and those are the facilities that are most likely to suffer fatalities, because when this virus gets into that population, it can have a very devastating effect on those residents. The next graph shows, again, by date of earliest illness and race or ethnicity. The reddish-colored bar at the bottom of the chart represents African-Americans. You can see early on in the pandemic, that was a much larger proportion of our cases as time has gone on. It's remained relatively flat with a few trends up and down. Last week, it actually trended down in our African-American community, which I think is good. The blue portion represents cases amongst white, non-Hispanic individuals, and that is right now the largest portion of our cases across Pitt County. Our Hispanic friends are represented by this sort of purple or lavender bar. And if you look from bar to bar, that's been about the same proportion, maybe slightly increased of a fairly level the last couple of weeks in that demographic. Moving on, if we look at this by age, this big tall section in the middle, as we've talked about before, represents ECU. You can see that reddish or orange is colored, depends on how this projects on your screen, represents the 18 to 24-year-old age group, that college age group, and that was the biggest group there. That had shrunk. It's grown a little bit in the last couple of weeks, but not to the extent that it had been previously. Our biggest group is the 25 to 49-year-old age group, sort of that young working adult or younger working adult age group. And then the one thing that I do see that I find a little bit disturbing in this is that in the 0 to 17 age group, sort of our school age group, we've seen a significant increase in that in the past two weeks. This is across Pitt County, so it doesn't reflect one school or any one demographic. It's an age group. So we have seen an uptick in that age group in the past couple of weeks here. Across the schools, we actually, the school felt like maybe there were some transmission in the school district that was student to student or staff to staff recently. But that has picked up a little bit in our school age kids here in Pitt County. Let's move on and talk about testing across the county. First chart shows our growing testing by week. The black line represents the percent positive. Again, if you look back, we were tracking this before the state was back in April, and in our internal calculations, we had a peak in April, around April 15th of about 21% that we calculated in our internal data. The state, for whatever reason, does not show that in theirs. This peak here in late August is the ECU peak, and then we came down, and we have crept up, and maybe there's a little tick down in that testing percentage here as of last week, and let's hope that that trend continues. The next graph shows the cumulative testing per week, the estimated number of testing per week. I've added a line at 4,000 and 6,000 to make it a little easier to see that graph. You can see for much of, from about the third week of August, or third week of July, excuse me, that we were near or above 4,000 tests a week, many weeks. When we got to October, excuse me, in October, the week of October 10th, we exceeded 4,000 tests and have continued to exceed 4,000 tests since then. We've had some weeks where we have approached and even exceeded 6,000 tests, probably up in the 7,000 range. And the first week of the month, the week of December 5th, we were above 8,000 tests that week. So testing is, numbers across Pitt County, very brisk. Again, the state recommends that we test about 5% of our population per month, or have the capacity to test 5% of our population per month, which is about 9,200 people. We are way, way over the 20,000 people per month being tested across the county if we look at any four-week period now. The Pitt County Testing Program, the Health Department Testing Program, from July and through last Thursday, when we did our last day of testing for the year, we tested in excess of 9,000 Pitt County residents. Many more have been tested as part of our contact investigation and tracing program. As I said, our open testing program stood down on December 17th. We do continue to test Pitt County residents, part of contact investigations and special circumstances. I have a crew going out to do a field operation tomorrow to test about 54 individuals at an off-site location. The federally funded DHHS surge site, which was at Sycamore Hill Church, was operated until December 16th. That site closed last week. This was supported or facilitated by Pitt County Health Department and Pitt County Emergency Management. Again, thank you to Randy Gentry and his team for helping support all of our operations. Overall, the site functioned very well, had a daily capacity of about 150 tests. This was a little different model than most of the testing sites in that the test was self-administered under the eye of a nurse or other medical provider who supervised the collection of that sample by the individual. The Guard detachment was and continues to be an excellent partner for us in our COVID response. Happy to report that the Guard has been extended to assist with COVID-related operations through the end of March 2020, and there's some talk that they may be extended into the early summer to continue to assist with our operations and maybe even with our vaccine operations. Last weekend, a group called Groundwater/Genesis Project had planned to come to Pitt County. They were planning to do a testing event in West Greenville at the Intergenerational Center. They were not granted permission to do that and ended up going to a backup plan at the Cornerstone Missionary Baptist Church on Allen Road. And it happened to be coincidentally that we were sponsoring an influenza vaccination clinic at that site that day. So we inadvertently or unintentionally became partners for the day. It worked out very well. They sent some staff to help with registration at the flu operation. They didn't test as many people as they would have liked. They had hoped to test maybe 200 people for the day. They did, I want to say around 100 people for the day, but they also had a food distribution, a toy giveaway, and overall, it was a very successful event, and we look forward to trying to partner with this organization for other events here in Pitt County. Our staffing, want to give you a quick update on our staffing situation. We continue to struggle with staffing issues. Again, I have a department with about 130 full-time spaces, full-time positions. We have 22 of those positions open right now, or about 17% of our workforce positions open. This time, I have seven public health nursing position open. I have an additional nurse who's out on medical leave after a surgery. By the end of March, we will have two nurses out on maternity leave. Happy for them, but they both got pregnant about the same time and are both due about the same time. So while we await new additions to the Pitt County Health Department family, they will come unfortunately at the same time and in what will likely be a very busy time for us. We still have the two full-time nurse practitioner positions that are open, and we're actually looking to a staffing agency potentially to help us with staffing in the short term for some of these positions. COVID-19 vaccine, I'm sure you've all seen in the news, lots and lots of things about the COVID-19 vaccine. If I had one email, I probably had 1,000 emails about COVID vaccine in the last week. We are scheduled to receive our first shipment of COVID-19 vaccine this week. We will be receiving the Moderna vaccine, which has less freezer requirements than the Pfizer vaccine. The Pfizer vaccine has the very cold chain requirement to be kept at about minus 80 degrees. The Moderna vaccine can be stored in a conventional freezer at conventional temperatures, and then once it's thawed, it can be stored in a regular refrigerator for up to 30 days. So it has a better shelf life for us and is more amenable to some of the operations that we conduct as the Health Department. This vaccine is currently designated for what's called Group 1A, which are frontline healthcare providers and residents of long-term care facilities and staff of long-term care facilities. Once we have the vaccine in hand, we'll begin vaccinating those groups. We have reached out to our local EMS providers who are frontline, and we'll be doing some of those likely this week. Once we receive that vaccine, we will eventually have to move out to residents and staff of long-term care facilities. We have about 60 of these facilities in Pitt County, and only 20 of them signed up. Actually, 61, I think it is, and my math doesn't add up there. There are 20 that signed up directly with the federal government to receive vaccine, and that will be provided to them by the chain pharmacies, similar to how their testing is being done. About 41 of the 61 facilities did not sign up directly with the federal government and will fall unfortunately to my jurisdiction. Did have a conversation with ECU about potentially partnering with us to help conduct some of those vaccines. They were looking for ways to help us out and had a very preliminary discussion with a doctor at ECU about that today. Our third group will be local outpatient medical providers who care for COVID patients, and we are currently in the process of surveying those individuals. Many practices have reached out to us for their providers and staff. I didn't mention the hospital again. I don't speak for Viden or the Viden facilities, but Viden did receive a supply of the Pfizer vaccine last week and has begun vaccinating their staff and also physicians who are credentialed providers and caring for COVID patients at the hospital. Wanted to just briefly touch up on some seasonal events. I mentioned to you in my last report, Ernie Davis Day, last Monday was Ernie Davis's birthday. We had a very low-key socially distant celebration for Ernie. Ernie, again, was the first African-American to win the Heisman Trophy, one of my personal heroes. I provided my staff with treats, and again, in the future, we hope to make this a public event and see that Ernie is remembered for the many things he did that are worthy of remembrance. The Polar Express last week, with the help of my Wick staff and the Pitt County Public Information Office staff, we recorded a reading of the Polar Express by Chris Van Aalsberg. This recording was uploaded late this afternoon to YouTube and is available on YouTube. We will get you the link for that reading. Please feel free to share that with children of all ages. We had fun doing it, and hopefully people will enjoy the reading of the Polar Express. We wish we could have done it in person, but obviously could not because of COVID. One final thought for you all. After COVID, we will need to build the Health Department of the 21st Century. This outbreak, not only on our community, is taking a terrible toll, it's taking a terrible toll on our public health workforce at all levels. And part of the mentality that I have tried to instill in my staff is embodied in the quote that you see in the picture there, where in 900 years of time and space, I've never met anyone who wasn't important. And some of my staff have embraced this, have put this up on their desks. We want to make sure that everybody is thought of as being important and everybody is valued, and for everybody to understand that it is a privilege to practice medicine, there is no right to practice medicine, and that taking care of patients in any setting is a privilege. I thank you for your time and attention. I'm happy to take any questions you might have this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Silverne. We really appreciate that, and we also want to thank your staff for the fine work that you and your staff are doing during this time. Do we have questions for Dr. Silverne?
Commissioner Albright?
Commissioner Albright? Commissioner Albright?
Yes, can you not hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Thank you, Dr. Silverne, for the report and for all your hard work and your staff's labor in these stressful times. My only question really is if you could tell us how you're doing. You seem okay, and we're glad to see you. Can you give us a quick personal update, please?
Yes, Commissioner, I continue to recover. I do have some days where I feel pretty fatigued still. Usually comes mid to late afternoon, but overall, much, much better. I'm fortunate, this never seemed to settle in my chest. It was mostly in my head and my gut, and I am overall feeling pretty good, but some days a little fatigued.
Thank you.
Thank you for your concern.
Okay, thank you. There are no other questions. We'll move to census update from James Rose.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good to be with you tonight. As requested by one of the commissioners, we're here just to give you a brief update about census 2020 operations following the field enumeration process that was completed about two months ago. Just wanted to remind you, you had a great group that was appointed and worked diligently, best we could, in the year of 2020. best we could in the year of twenty twenty, to try to get a very accurate count here in in eastern North Carolina and specifically Pitt County. We had a number of folks that met a number of times at the end of the process, virtually, of course. But this came with challenges for this operation as well. And again, we were trying to reach those typically undercounted or hard-to-reach populations in our area. We did have a number of partners even outside of Pitt County that assisted us. Certainly, the census staff, we brought in a number of the staff members to give us insight as to recruitment of workers and how they were handling operations in the field. We became good buddies with the state demographer, Dr. Klein, to get insight on what the demographics looked like in Pitt County and the state as a whole. We also gained valuable input from the state's Complete Count Committee, and I believe Havencio Peralta is on the line tonight. We were fortunate enough to have him on our local Complete Count Committee, and he also served on the state's. So again, very much appreciated his efforts. And the Latinx community, certainly, we reached out to that group. Typically, that's a hard-to-count population, and this group gave us a lot of good input as to how to best reach that group. So what did we do promotionally? Again, trying to reach folks in a contactless society of sorts. We went to where people tended to congregate, hopefully socially-distanced at the same time. These were some food distribution sites, food pantries. Also, in the virtual environment, we worked with any group that would have us, including property managers, to get emails sent out. We did a lot of digital advertising with Pitt Community College. And since people were out and about in some of the better weather, we actually had digital signs that the city of Greenville provided along the greenways. Number of other activities, too. So we did have some promotional items. We did take a couple of shots of Lee Guth out at the farmer's market, for example, with a fan on one of the very hot days. So we actually had those fans that we didn't think anyone would use early on in the process, but they became very valuable in the hot weather. And certainly, the social media component was vital to our outreach, and the Public Information Office really was instrumental in helping us push that out. So did we meet our goals? No. Started a report that the census spots, and remember, this was what we were trying to push out so people could respond on their own, and this year, you could pick up your handheld device or go online and and complete your census form right there in your home environment for change on your own. But we did fall a little short of our goal, but I would like to report, once the enumeration operations were completed, we felt very comfortable, based on what the Census Bureau provided us locally, that we were able to count just about all the households here in Pitt County. So that's a good news report. So key dates moving forward, a lot of uncertainty right now. Some of these dates have been moved back. Certainly, in years past, the president would receive the decennial census by the end of the calendar year, that being this year on December the thirty-first. That is not going to happen this year. That's been pushed back at least into January. That also pushes back our redistricting data set that we should get typically in the early spring. It will be a little bit later, probably in May. That, Madam Chair, will certainly be used change possibly some of your boundaries for your voter districts for the commissioners. So we'll be bringing you more information about that. And then later on in the year, probably in the fall, we'll get the remainder of the data sets. One thing we did want to make you aware of, and that is the Census Count Question Resolution. I've talked recently with the state demographer, and he's feeling like we need to be prepared when this when these numbers come out in the fall. If we do have concerns, we need to be prepared to make have those questions cited back to the Census Bureau. So, Madam Chair, we're already working with the city of Greenville and some other agencies to try to get what we feel like is our best estimate of population here and work to make sure we've got boundaries and other things identified as they need to be. There have been some recent annexations, just as an example. Those would need to be reflected correctly on the census maps. Also, we're not able to really contest the actual population number itself. It really comes down to the households that are counted. And that's what we're trying to gather through some building permit information and other sources to make sure when that data is released, if we see some bigger discrepancies than we feel should be there, we'll be able to move forward with any of those concerns. So that's it for our update at this point in time. Again, a lot of information will be rolling out early next year. We've got our contact information for myself and Tracy Cash on my staff if you have any burning questions about what's going on with Census twenty twenty. So with that, Madam Chair, I welcome any questions tonight.
Well, we want to thank you and the members of the committee for your hard work. You didn't make your goal, but we want to thank you for your hard work and try it. So do we have any, do we have any questions for James?
Madam Chair, I see no hands up right now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And Madam Chair, Chairwoman, if you would like to go back to Dr. Moore, I believe he's back up on the screen now.
Okay, Dr. Moore.
So very much, and I have no idea what's going on with my computer tonight, but a rough start means a great ending. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to talk briefly about the Bethel Youth Activity Center. This is a center that was established out of an ABC store that had closed after numerous discussions with the town of Bethel, the ABC Board, and various commissioners and and the general citizens of Bethel, were decided to move forward with asking for use of this building to continue our after-school programs. We have been doing after-school programs at the Bethel School for the past four years, and that has gone extremely well. We've had, on average, about sixty-two students enrolled in the program. Now that we are in the Bethel Youth Activity Center, which actually opened officially on November twentieth, when we did our open house, we have officially enrolled an addition of forty students and really could add more students, but, you know, it's a small building, and so we're not able to add any more students at this time. But the good thing is that this is a remote learning center. So students don't have to all be there at the same time. They can schedule themselves to come in, do their homework, or if need be, they can stay there all day long under supervision. We have a full staff that is there to work with the students, logging on to their assignments. In the afternoon, we have a tutorial program where students can get assistance with their homework or any particular project that they are working on. We were very blessed in that Southern Link became a partner, and they donated thirty new computers and with the chairs and tables. And so the building is high-tech. It is well-equipped. We went in, did some very serious modifications in terms of putting the new floor in, adding a handicap bathroom and some other amenities. And so the building is getting a lot of use. Equally important is that this building is available to the entire citizenry of Bethel. Anyone can come, use a computer, get assistance with whatever they need relative to logging on, getting public assistance, or just using the computer for their personal use. We're there from eight AM to five PM in the afternoon. I can easily see how into twenty-one that we will have to add on probably Saturday classes and some evening activities in order to accommodate the needs of the students and the family members in the town. All of our programs and services are free. Parents don't pay for them. And we're going to continue that. As long as we can find the resources to support the center, there will be no charge for our programs and services. Students who are there all day long receive a hot meal, hot lunch, and they get a snack in the afternoon. So the center is is a real, real plus. It's not just something nice to have in Bethel. It is it's absolutely necessary. If you look at the data, it strongly suggests that for every three students that's in an after-school program, there is at least one more who is in need of getting into an after-school program. Remote learning sites are growing, is is a growing thing during the COVID situation that we're in. And we are registered with the state of North Carolina. We're registered with the federal government. And we are very excited to be a resource for the town of Bethel and for any Pitt County student who has a need to use technology in that center. I'll stop there because I could go on for another half an hour, but.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. You're doing such a fine job there with those students in Bethel. And as you said, any student in Pitt County can take advantage of this. I believe we have a question for you from Albright.
Not really so much your question is to to say that's a really good-looking ABC story you got. Thank you so much for all your hard work. That was, those were amazing pictures, and congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, we are, I mean, we're doing a different type of ABC now.
You got it down now. Thank you.
Yes. May I share just one brief success story? And, you know, we've been open since November twentieth, but, you know, we've had students to come in and say, hey, you know, I was having difficulty with my math class or any other class, and they say, but I'm doing okay now. Because what we provide for them is is one-on-one instruction and assistance. We have, you know, five staff, we pay staff. We have ten volunteers that work with us in the center, and they're not all there at the same time. It all depends on how many students register for service. And and I just, we're just excited to see that we're making a difference in the lives of these kids and keeping them off the street. You know, that's that's a big deal. You know, we we got to keep them engaged. So that's what we're doing, and thank you so much for your interest. And let me invite you to come by, please, and take a look at the center and see what we're doing. And and we're always open for guidance and advice. So so please come and share whatever guidance that you may have because we want to provide the absolute best programs and services that are available. This is not just a fly-by-night operation. We're very serious about our programs and services. Thank you.
I believe Commissioner Perkins Williams may have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor.
She's muted.
You're muted.
Dr. Moore, thank you so much for your time, interest, and energy that you have put in this project. Knowing what I do from various residents as well as myself, how has your internet connectivity been? Because I know there was a time when people had to go in various places and hold, you know, and I know it has been a month since we have, we just got internet today in the office, even though that's been a problem in various places, and we're closer to Greenville than you are. So how has your internet capability has been? And have you, would you like to see it better?
Yeah, it 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 has been fantastic. I mean, it can always be better, but we've had very few issues with our connectivity. Sometimes we have all the computers operating at the same time, and we are, we're doing okay. We were blessed to have a direct connection with Southern Link, so we're having an issue. We can pick the phone up and call them and say, hey, look, we're having a problem, and and they will send a stronger signal through. But the internet is designed at that center such that you can drive in the parking lot and you can access the internet. That is the, that's how strong that signal is. And, you know, on a cloudy day or the weather's bad or what have you, that may be an issue. But we we requested that because we recognized that there were citizens who had issues getting on the internet, and we wanted to overcome that problem. But at this point, we we are, we're okay. We're okay.
I am very surprised at your comment because I do know that internet is a serious problem among the residents over here. And your partnership with Southern Link does help. I do know that when you make a call to Southern Link, it takes an hour or two sometime to even get someone to even talk to. So I'm glad that you are having a very positive experience with Southern Link in this project, but that's not the case throughout the district. So I'm I'm pleased, very pleased with that and that.
Yes, ma'am. So one of the things that Southern Link agreed to do when they decided they wanted to be our partner in this is to assign one of their persons to us so that we had direct contact to rectify any issues that we're having with, you know, the internet or the phones or what have you. So, you know, it for for us, it's been good because you can't have kids working on their assignments and the internet, you know, is down, and and that that can be quite frustrating, you know, for them.
I I do know that I reopened the office for constituency services in December, and we just got to the place today to have access to internet. And the bill came before we got access. So I must say that you having that direct capability has been a positive thing for you, and that's wonderful. I'm glad it's available by pulling in the parking lot, by the way.
Yes, and if you have an issue with that, let me know. I have a direct contact. Okay, thank you.
I believe Mr. McGraw-Horn, Commissioner McGraw-Horn, do you have a question?
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Just wanted to congratulate Gary. You have been such a fine humanitarian in Pitt County, and you work very diligently with our youth and other programs in this county. So hats off to you, and we wish you Godspeed in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Again, thank you, Dr. Moore. I believe we will be talking about the building again on another item later. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
Okay. Now we're here from Sam Kroom, Tax Collection Report.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Manager Elliott, it's good to be with y'all tonight. Tonight, I bring you the November twenty twenty Tax Collection Report. The Pitt County fiscal year-to-date, July one through November thirtieth, the combined collection rate for real and personal property is sixty-eight point seven-two percent. The combined rate one year ago for real and personal property was sixty-seven point three-two percent. Pitt County tax administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes owed to the county using all the available remedies through the North Carolina general statutes. My recommendation is for the commissioners to approve the November twenty twenty Tax Collection Report as presented.
Okay. Do we entertain a motion to approve? Mr. Albright, Commissioner Albright.
I move for approval of the report, please.
Commissioner Nunn.
I'll second that.
OK, it's been moved in second that we approve the 2020 Tax Collection Report, the November Tax Collection Report. Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick. Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGraw-Horn.
Yes.
Commissioner Donnelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We'll have Brian Barnett next. I believe he's coming to the podium to talk about the EMS funds on November 30 and the solid waste enterprise fund.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and Board of Commissioners. You have in front of you your report for our monthly financials and the general fund, the solid waste fund and the EMS fund as of November 30. This is our fifth month, so we are 41.67% of the way through the fiscal year. On the general fund side, we have collected 50.8% of anticipated revenues and we have spent 38.7% of expenses. On the solid waste side, we have collected 57.12% of our anticipated revenues and spent 35.19%. And in the EMS fund, we have spent, we have collected 55.62% of our revenues and we have spent 43.75% of our expenses. On the general fund side, I do want to point out that our revenue to expense percent difference is better this year than it was last year, primarily due to the purchase of the Warren Farm. And at this point in time, our revenues are anticipated levels despite the COVID pandemic that's currently going on. If you have any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer.
Commissioner Ward.
No, I was going to make a motion for approval.
Commissioner Nunn.
A second. A second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the report. Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGraw-Horn.
Yes.
Commissioner Donnelly.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Now we have the Managers' Report.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. First item we have is announcing our next meeting dates. For the meeting for the month of January 2021, you'll have one regular meeting. That'll be Monday, January 11 at 6:00 PM. Then you have your annual CIP workshop on Monday, January 25 at 8:00 AM. We anticipate that to be a Zoom type environment virtual meeting like we're doing today. Item B, we've been asked to give an update regarding glass recycling. We continue to work on this. John Dimmer is in the audience, so I'd ask him just to briefly just kind of state where we're at with our grant application and our plans in terms of moving forward, whether we receive the grant or or not.
Evening. So right after our October meeting, I applied for a grant with the Glass Foundation, National Glass Foundation. Received information from them about two weeks ago that they wanted to speak with me. So I met, we had a Zoom meeting, they asked some questions. If I felt very good that we're going to get funded. I don't know when, they wouldn't give me a date. I did reach out to him this morning, sent him an email, told him that I was coming to update the Commissioners and that if they had any information, I would like to have it. And I didn't hear back from them, could be because it's the week of Christmas. I just don't know when we're going to. They didn't give me a date. They said very soon is what they said. And I'm just waiting for them to give us the OK. This is a reimbursement grant, so we, if we can't go spend any money until we got a contract or we won't get reimbursed for for it. So that's where we stand.
And right now, John, the anticipation is to have 14 or 15 containers, 14 convenience sites and maybe one at the at the transfer station?
Yes, probably that, at least 14 and then one at the transfer station. So that'd be 15 sites that we would have a container to collect glass in. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if anybody has any.
I don't see any hands up.
OK.
OK. Next on the agenda, have the the caption merit pay. As the Board is aware, in this year's budget for fiscal year 2021, for the workforce, we did not budget anything for a cost of living adjustment for the employees based upon the 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 budget and available revenues versus expenditures. But we did budget merit and certification pay for employees. And we basically had said during the budget message, we wanted to wait till roughly the first of the year or the midpoint in the year till we so we could track revenues to make sure that that revenues were on track. We've seen as Brian just reported on the the financials, very strong performance on sales tax, very strong performance on the property tax collection. I'm at this point intending on flipping the switch back on for that merit pay and certification pay. It is in the budget. This would be retroactive. If employee's anniversary date fell, say, July 1, they'd be retroback. If employee's anniversary date falls in, say, March 1st, well, their 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 date, their their certification or or merit pay would be affected in March. So we'll be planning to announce that to employees tomorrow, this week. And hopefully, there'll be a little bit of a morale booster in in terms of the the COVID operating environment. Again, this this is tied back to the county's PEP system. That's your performance evaluation tool. Employees do have to earn these these increases and it's tied to performance. Item D, wanted to report to you real quickly. As you're aware, through the annual CIP Budget Workshop, we have been working with Alice King and James Rhodes for years on the District Park. And we've had a lot of successes in obtained obtaining funding to build the District Park. But the one project that remains on the District Park Master Plan is the gymnasium. And Alice is here to give an update on that regarding a funding opportunity. As you recall, in the past, during the CIP workshops, you've asked Alice and the staff to pursue any type of grants that might be out there and available to assist the county to defray the 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 cost of this project. And they've identified one and it's actually was due, I think, last Friday. So Alice is here to report on it.
Before you begin, Commissioner Perkins-Williams, do you have a question of the manager?
I was going to ask a question as relates to district. But I do know that in order to get the brick funding, you had to have a plan on board. And I think it was very good that Pitt County stepped up and had something in place to acquire for this particular grant in addition to NACO. That was one of the things having to do with resilience. So I I was thinking you would call me after Ms. King's presentation. But what what, when you say district, what do you mean by that word?
Well, I think Alice is going to make this presentation, then maybe we can take questions at the end.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. And again, glad to be here with with you for some possible good news tonight. At least it's we we, as the county manager, has indicated. James and I and our Planning Department, Community Schools and Recreation have been diligent over the years in every single possibility for additional funding for the gymnasium. We've gone after it. So just kind of remind us of history. The gym has been in the plan for the District Park with the Community Schools and Recreation Center and the gym. That was that was in the plan, has been in the plan since the very start. And that was back in 2000. It's hard to believe we're 20 years down the road now. As Commissioner Perkins-Williams has indicated, this is brick funding that is building resilient infrastructure in communities grant. This is the first year for brick funding under FEMA. And again, because we have had a plan since really 2000 and we have, we have looked at dual purposes, we've looked at every possibility there. We were in a position to go forward with this plan. And we were actually encouraged to apply by our state partners and and certainly our local partners. This funding would be for a special medical needs slash gymnasium. And again, you'll recall, we've looked at dual purposes because that would enable us to to apply for many different kinds of funding. First, we looked at a shelter. Now we're looking at a special medical needs shelter slash gymnasium, which is desperately needed in Pitt County. And again, we believe this is a tremendous opportunity for us. We did have a plan ready to go. It's hard to imagine that a community that didn't have a plan ready to go would have been able to have met the very tight timeline. I'm going to show you in the next couple of slides. A few things that we really have going in our favor positives for Pitt County. The special medical needs slash gymnasium is in our park master plan. It's also, as was indicated earlier, in our 2021 Capital Improvement Plan. And most recently, it's in our Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan, which was just approved by FEMA in September of this year. So talking about hot off the press and something that is very current and up to date is our Regional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Also, you remember a couple of summers ago, we had the 83rd Civil Affairs Battalion visit us for a week and did a very thorough report on our current special medical needs shelter and the many inadequacies that are in that shelter. So we believe all of those things show diligence on the part of Pitt County to look at avenues for meeting these needs. And and those, all of those reports are a part of this overall application. Again, we just wanted to show you the very short timeline. This this funding was announced in September. Our letter of intent was due to the state on the 1st of October. And then the state referred back to the counties and cities that were allowed to do a full application. So our application, as county manager has indicated, was submitted actually last week. And if it is then approved by the state, it will be sent up to FEMA by the end of January, actually January 20. So again, you can see the very tight timeline. My hat is off to our Planning Department. Did a remarkable job. This this proposal is probably in seven or 800 pages. So it was was a very detailed application process. And and our department was able to put that together, as you can see, in a very tight timeframe. Now, if funded, we would be getting close to seven, well, our project's close to 17 million. Again, dual purpose with up to 12.7 million coming from FEMA with an approximate 4.3 million needed in matching dollars. Now, we we've been told that the state may put in some of those matching dollars. And then, of course, we'll have to have some local matching dollars. Now, some of you are already asking yourself, well, that's a bigger figure than we've seen before. The reason for this is having a special medical needs shelter means extra reinforcements in the structure, a large generator for power, additional electrical outlets, more spaces needed. We have met directly with social services and our emergency medical staff who actually have done this process and manned those shelters. So they've been able to tell us the things that they need to really adequately give the service for residents in time of disasters. So in essence, this medical, special medical needs dual purpose will move us from about a 24,000 square foot facility to approximately 37,000 square feet. But the important thing for all of us to remember is that will be used for a special medical needs shelter in time of disaster. Now, some years, we're lucky and we don't have to open shelters at all. But then even if we do, that's a small number of days compared to 365 days. And this this special medical needs shelter that is built with that purpose in mind would give excellent care to our residents. And the other thing, we just talked about county staff. When we sat and listened to some of the stories of how difficult it is to manage in a facility that's not set up to manage special medical needs, it will have a tremendous impact, positive impact on our staff. And then beyond that, 365 days a year or in times of disaster, a few days less, all those other days will be service and activities and events, activities to build the health and well being citizens of all ages across our county. So we believe this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. We've worked very hard to make this grant the best it can be. We've we have letters of support from our partners, both on the local and state level. And our mantra or our saying is we leave no stone unturned in making this gymnasium a special medical needs shelter reality for the citizens in Pitt County. I'll be happy to try and answer questions.
Well, first of all, thank you. I believe we have a question. Commissioner Nunn, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Alice, for your presentation. Just wanted if you could quickly clarify for the Commission, what would fall under special medical needs outside of the outside of the obviously disaster assistance? But special medical needs, what what sort of services would be provided?
Commissioner Nunn, I can give you some examples. It would be people that have special equipment that that has to have electrical power. People that are on special medications that has to remain refrigerated. People that are confined to, in some cases, hospital beds and in many cases wheelchairers. People that really have to have all of the amenities, i.e. refrigeration, electrical power outlets to maintain their health. And they also need the presence of medical staff available to them. So this center would have medical staff 24/7 as as well as the social workers and the EMS staff and others that would be there.
Essentially, it would be also a medical center for these folks. And I guess my question is, from where does the ongoing funding come to support that that side of it after the capital need is met, presumed by the grant? And other sources?
So if I can kind of chime in, so any person who would come to the shelter for a special needs purpose would need to bring their own aide or caretaker there. My understanding is we would not, the county would not necessarily have nurses and doctors and support staff there to run and operate it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Alice.
I believe that is that is accurate. The shelter currently has medical staff that is in and out. That's some staff from Viedt Medical. It's some staff from Brandy School of Medicine. It it would be the same kind of coverage that they currently have. It would just be in a facility that is is far superior as far as its ability to handle the 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 residents that come there as well as their caregivers and the staff, our staff, social workers, et cetera, that that are there to help care for these individuals. These are individuals that that could not manage in a typical shelter, i.e. a gymnasium at Welcome Middle School, for instance. They they require additional amenities and services that have to be in place for their care.
I think we've said too, as applicable to this gymnasium, as we as we open shelters around the county for hurricane type of situation where folks are needing to to shelter down, as we are trying to reopen schools, close shelters down, we have had a need in the past. we have had a need in the past to find a location where we can consolidate shelters and move folks to, and allow the school system to reopen and not have to be interrupted with the gymnasium full of folks in, in cots. So in the past, we've identified this location, this gymnasium, that purpose is for a dual purpose as and when applicable, if that's still a valid case.
Well, and the other thing, and again, this was pointed out in the 80, 83rd Civil Affairs Battalion report. This is a great location. It is very centrally located in the county. It's high above sea level. So we, in fact, we have been used in, in past disasters for NC DOT as well as emergency medical services for staging, for their equipment and their staff. We have the amenity of the Community Schools and Recreation Center, the Council on Aging across the street. We have animal services across the road, which again may come into play with some of the people that have to use the center. We have the two schools with, with large kitchens and they're already preparing food. So there's a lot of amenities that are there that will support this gymnasium shelter.
I think it was pointed out, but wanted to restate that this would be a regional special need shelter, not just Pitt County, but adjoining counties. But I think we anticipate, I think on average, we said we have 18 to 20 folks in, in a special need shelter operation or environment. But again, as a regional shelter, we would be opening it up to folks in other counties to come to the shelter if and as needed.
Correct.
Scott, that led me to my, really, I guess my final question to Alice was if, if it is indeed regional, are we expecting to have regional partners to help, help fund it on the back, backside of this? And have we had those conversations today?
We have had some conversations with regional staff and they are, they are very supportive of this because in, in many cases, they have to send people to Pitt County anyway because they have absolutely no resources of this nature to, to help the residents in their county.
And from a debt service perspective, if, if we're funded this, this application, this BRIC application, the county needs to come up with the, the $4 million. It would be the equivalent of about a quarter of a penny tax increase to retire this $4 million over 20 years. About $300,000, $330,000 per, per year. Just to give you an idea that, that would be funding we would need to identify A through tax increase or if, or if you were to dedicate growth in the base, the tax base toward it. But again, that always has consequences of needing that to expand service or provide employee benefits, services and so forth. But I do want the board to be aware that that $4 million would have to be identified and matched, basically.
Okay. Commissioner Perkins-Williams, do you have a question?
Mr. Manager, in listening to the national discussion last week as it relates to the BRIC program, there was a very strong support for having something, this is what happens when you plan and be creative about your thinking. And this program is what we had already on the book in detail. And they were talking about it needed to be detailed as to what it will address. So this, they support the president of the NACO was saying this was strong and there was additional funds down the line for this as well. So I, I certainly want to again commend the county officials in having a plan on the books and on the table that the citizens in this area can benefit from. And, and just listening to it is there and we have everything we need. And my fingers are crossed positive for you. Thank you so much, Alice King, and your committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just a few other things to report on the manager's report. NACO for the annual National County Government Month recognition celebration is having a theme of Counties Matter. And they are having as part of this a I Love My County Art Contest. And we have reached out to the Pitt County Schools, to Dr. Linker and Mrs. Behan, asking them if they would like to participate. It's for ages one through 18. And we didn't hear back from them on that, but just to let the board know that we are trying to engage ourselves in that. Adam F. on the agenda says chairwoman's appointments. I've spoken to Chairwoman Huggins, Madam Chairwoman Huggins' appointments. She plans on bringing those back in the month of January. And if she hasn't already, she will be talking to each of the individual commissioners regarding her individual appointments to the appointments list that the, the chairwoman will be making those appointments to. Other than that, just to have a couple of other items real quick. We did have a PSA, a public service announcement created. We had a, a kind of a joint task force, as you might, might want to call it, between the city and the county, between the Madam Chairman, woman, Ann Huggins, myself, the Health Director, Mayor Conley, the Greenville City Manager, and, and, and a few others. And I think the staff are going to pull it up real quick and show what we are going to be playing on the media outlets. And this will hopefully be one of several to come.
It matters what we do. It matters what you do. Let's all do our part to fight the spread of COVID-19 in Pitt County.
Masks work.
Wait at least six feet apart. Avoid large gatherings.
Wash your hands a lot. Use hand sanitizer when soap and water is not available.
Stay home if you're sick.
We're almost there. A vaccine will be available soon.
Here, wait.
Wash.
We're in this together.
So a quick 30 seconds and hopefully captures the attention of people watching the, the TV to see the, the different faces and the, the the language and so forth and try to capture, try to keep the, the message consistent with how, what the, the state is, state and CDC and others are recommending. So we'll, you'll, hopefully we'll be seeing that on the major television outlets and with hopefully with other PSAs to come.
And that is a joint effort with the city and the county?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams and Commissioner Ward, Commissioner?
I'd like to accommodate the presentation, but I also would like to know, would the appointments be in the board packet as usual?
Probably so.
I was, we usually get those in the packet and I was wondering if they're going to be presented in the packet, Mr. Manager and Chairwoman Huggins?
Probably so.
Do we?
Yeah.
Probably is not a firm answer.
Probably so.
It's been done either way. Sometimes we just announce that they've been made. Sometimes the chairman will ask then to be put in the packet. It could
Yeah.
Just depends upon the chairwoman's prerogative.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes, if it's appropriate, I was going to move for acceptance of the items for consent.
Two, two other items real quick on the manager's report. I realize that
Oh, I thought you gave them. I'm sorry, Scott.
Yeah, just, one is regarding the Board of County Commissioners meetings starting in the month of January, not knowing where our COVID situation is going to go. We are recommending to consider in the month of January that we not be meeting in the meeting room, but have everybody in virtual environment as possible, unless the, the chairwoman has any other preference to try to keep us from congregating. Now, we want to, to watch the numbers. If, if the numbers grow, we may move to this. If, if the numbers come down, then we can continue. But if, if the numbers continue to grow, I know the Greenville City Council, they basically, they're all virtual. And the manager's in his office, the, all the board members in their office, all the guest speakers kind of come in like we had today. The, the idea is obviously to not gather and to have any chance of spread of COVID. But we can talk to the chairwoman about that as we move forward. But that's a thought. Just wanted to kind of present that idea to the board and if we move that direction, didn't want you to be surprised if we're all appearing virtually rather than in this meeting room.
Okay. So that, so that's what we're thinking?
Thinking, yes. And I'll be in contact with you to further flesh that out. The last item, just real quick, on our Candlewick Area Sanitary District, myself and James Rhodes did it here, here before City Council. I think it was last week or week before, time's flying. We represented the county in regards to the annexation waiver request for the 24 lots outside the original Candlewick District. We spent a good 30, 45 minutes going back and forth with council and staff on that. And at the end of the day, the end of the day, it would, it tied in a 33 vote, three folks, I mean, I forget what the motion was, but in, in the end, the, the mayor broke the tie and voted against our request to allow the waiver for the annexation. So at this point in time, we are, we are tied to any of those folks out of the original district would have to hook on to city sewer. We do have a, I mean, they would have to, not city sewer, they would have to sign the annexation agreement to agree to be annexed. We're going to be approaching the city about an alternative, maybe delay in, in some respect, but that'll be further fleshed out.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Ward was going to make a motion to approve the items for consent, I believe.
Yes, I stand by that motion.
Fitzpatrick, Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
I'd like to second that motion, please.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. The items for consent be approved. Madam Chair, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlaughmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Message passes unanimously.
Thank you. And we will now move to items for discussion. We have one item under that, discharging of firearms and our attorney, Janet Scallister.
Yes, good evening. This was an item that was brought up by then Vice Chair Coulson last October about the discharge of firearms within the unincorporated parts of the county. At that time, Vice Chairman Coulson had asked that we bring back some research as to what other counties are doing and that we inquire with the sheriff's office as to what sort of data they may have. I did share with you in your weekly information packet a memo that was dated November 12th. I won't go through that with you because you have it in your packet again today. But just in some of the 100 North Carolina counties that were surveyed, 25 have local organ, local ordinances that regulate the discharge of firearms. Of those 25, 18 have standalone ordinances regulating the discharge of firearms and seven have incorporated into their noise ordinance. There is legal authority to enact an ordinance regulating the discharge of firearms if this board desires to do so. And the information is set forth in more detail within the memorandum that you've received. We also have John Gard present this evening. He has given some general information and is available to answer any questions that you may have. And I won't speak for him or the sheriff's office, but if you'd like me to briefly summarize, in the, the deputies responded to 240 calls for service reported as shots fired in 2019. As of December 10th, 2020, which is a little bit shorter period of time, there were 361 calls for service as shots fired within the unincorporated parts of the county, which is a little more than a 50% increase in the call volume between 2019 and 2020. Now, this is difficult data to capture for the sheriff's office because there are not particular codes that relate to problematic shots fired. They could be any number of different things related to shots fired. But that was the data that was requested and John Gard is available. If you have any questions for him, I'm available to answer any questions you may have about the other county data to determine where the board wants to move next on this idea.
Okay, I believe what we're looking for is guidance from this commission as to how we want to, to go from here. Attorney Gallagher is waiting to see if we want to do an, an ordinance or just where we want her to go. So I do see a hand, Commissioner Nunnely?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Ms. Gallagher, for providing the, the breakdown of the counties and that research. I, I wondered in reading it. And then this is based on also Commissioner Coulson's, I guess hypothetical from the concerned constituent. When this was raised, the last time I wondered if, if counties that do have regulations, if they track those regulations parallel to, to NC Wildlife regulations, if that's something that, that, that's considered. Clearly, we have a nuisance statute in the state. It's kind of difficult to prosecute under that. And I didn't know if, if I guess the makeup of those, if it's, if it's that they're kind of bootstrapping onto what wildlife does, fishing game, and those sorts of regulations, as there, there are, you know, provisions for not shooting too close to a dwelling, things of that nature. I just didn't know if, if, if we were going to pursue something along this front, if it, if it wouldn't be advisable to track with the regulatory authority that's already out there that's regulating wildlife in the, in the state.
So if I could answer that question, Pitt County has its own regulations with regard to hunting that are enforced by the wildlife officers. I did not track in the other counties who has other ordinances related to wildlife. But the 25 counties that do have regulations have regulations separate and apart from wildlife that are not enforced in connection with or by any of the wildlife officers. They're, they are enforced by their local sheriff's office or law enforcement, local law enforcement and not combined with their hunting ordinances. Not to say that we couldn't, but I would say probably the reason we didn't is jurisdictional. So in order for a wildlife officer to enforce a county ordinance, it has to follow a very strict process of being approved through, through the state for state enforcement. We did that with our ordinance relating to discharge of firearms in connection with hunting. And those, that is the only aspect that they will enforce. So anything outside of that would be within the jurisdiction of the, the sheriff's department to enforce, either through a noise ordinance or through a standalone ordinance as a misdemeanor. And I'm not aware of any counties that have combined their hunting ordinance with their general discharge of firearms ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Coulson?
I'd like to hear from John Gard, what, what the sheriff, Danz, what do they feel about this?
Commissioner Coulson, and top with Sheriff Danz, you know, from the lens of an enforcement arm. You know, having a, a county ordinance gives another strategy as a deterrent. But again, when you're looking at our, our call volume and, and the increase, I mean, us being able to tell you what specifically it comes through is almost impossible. I mean, you can have opening day of dove season, you may have calls of shots fired in, in the county. Or it could be somebody target practicing in their, in their backyard. And, you know, if you take the target practicing and they have a burn, somebody calls in because they hear a firearm discharge, there's no criminal, there's no crime at that point if they have, you know, burns and they're shooting, shooting safely. So we're going to kind of defer to the board on, on that. You know, the lady of justice is blind. We'll follow the direction of, of what you all as a board decide and vote on. And we will be an extension of, of y'all as needed on that.
You know, the
Well, I brought it, well, I brought it up. I think it's worthy of consideration by the commissioners. I personally don't think, I, I own a lot of guns. Big Second Amendment person. I do not consider this to be infringement in any way if we were to go with an ordinance against the Second Amendment. I, I certainly can live with it and I've talked I, I certainly can live with it, and I've talked to a lot of people, and, and with the exception of maybe one or two, and I've talked to probably two dozen, nobody really has any problems with it, at least that's been my experience in talking with the people that I talk with. Now, there are a couple out there that, that they don't like the idea, but I'm concerned about wild, I mean, about farming, you know, livestock. I'm concerned about discharging a gun and it going off of somebody's property and on to somebody else's property, and what, what kind of dangers that might impose, and whether there needs to be some kind of, of, an agreement with, with, with an adjacent property that they are saying, yeah, you can discharge your gun on to my property. I, I think it's worth us discussing. Now, I'll leave it up to the other eight of you. The rest of you may not think it holds merit, but I do.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams, and then Commissioner McLaughlin.
In view of the fact, the statistics that shows that the, the increase of this firing of firearms has increased 50% is an alarm. This, in the last couple of weeks, I received three calls from three different sources. Matter of fact, one of the ministers just called me this past, I think it was Friday, talking about his elderly mother's home was shot up by he, they, and they all called, by the way, the sheriff's department. He was concerned because the mother was frightened, and she, she's elderly. So there, there needs to be, I'm, I'm supportive of an ordinance, especially with adjacent properties. That's number one. Number two, I'm not saying take people weapons because I do know that hunting wildlife is a part of some people's food source. But when you get an 86, a call from an 86-year-old person to various residents that, who say, my cousin was sitting in his comfortable chair in his living room and decided to get up, and before he could get where he was going in his residence, a bullet passed through the wall of his home into the very chair that he said he was sitting in is a call for concern. And also, there was a target practicing in one yard, and right across from that yard was a group of children play. Bullets have no eyes, and you never know about the sight of the weapon, if it's off-site it or on-site it, or if the sighted is perfect. And those of you who hunt know the difference. But I do know that, that I feel very concerned when I saw the incidents of children playing right across the street from where there was target practice. I felt like it was too close. Everybody in the yard were young, but the adults should have known better. And some things are not sensible as it relates to some people who understand guns, such as Tom Coulson, who has had a many a conversation with me about firearms. It concerns me when you are not cautious enough that a certain distance away, and all weapons don't have the best sight of, of the, of them, and it could be off. So I'm supporting having some kind of ordinance and distance involved because a young life is atrocious. And I, I guess, some of our conversations, you know, that I do know, being in a rural area, every household almost has a weapon of some type. And whether or not what you use that weapon for is a purpose for that household, and one is to go hunting and for food source. So I'm not saying do away with that amendment, but I am saying that there should be some regulations relating to the closeness. What, two of the incidents was in, one is a subdivision, one was a mobile home park, and I'm not quite sure where that mother lives, but I know she lives on a main street in this district for that minister who called me. And I said that it is on the agenda, and I just wanted to share with you the calls that I'm getting relating to, I don't want to call it carelessness, but when people shoot weapons, when children are at play, you never know when they're going to run out, grab a ball, a jar, take a quick change of their direction. So I have concern about it. That's my spiel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think it's ultimately important in respect of the safety and well-being of all our citizens here in Pitt County. Having said that, Madam Attorney, did you say that we had something in place in terms of discharging firearms? I wish you could spill that up again.
Sure. Commissioner McLaughlin, we already have in place a hunting ordinance that regulates the discharge of firearms in the course of hunting. That's enforced by wildlife enforcement officers, and that prohibits firing across somebody else's land, prohibits running your dogs across somebody else's land without a neighbor's permission. It prohibits discharging a firearm in the course of hunting from the road or within 300 feet of somebody else's residence. So what's, that's already on the books in the course of hunting. What's being proposed today, I believe, is that is similar type restrictions, but for the recreational discharge of a gun. So if someone is on their, in their backyard in their home, and they're wanting to do their own target practice with a gun they own in their own yard, if they live close to another residence, this proposed ordinance would make that a crime. Or if, or if it would be close to a school or, or some other place where children might be playing, it would make it illegal or make it a crime to discharge a firearm for recreational purposes. So we already regulate hunting. The question is whether or not this board wants to extend that to someone's individual ability to shoot their gun on their own land or on land that they have permission to shoot on.
Thank you very much. I, I, I think it's still important that we do not infringe upon the well-being of the citizens of Pitt County, even in adjacent homes. So it, it seems to me, if, if I hear Tom, Commissioner Coulson, recommendation is that we do something in terms of an ordinance prohibiting such a discharge of individual weapons that would endanger the adjacent residents. And I'm, I'm in favor that we, that we look into something like that.
Thank you. We'll move to Commissioner Albright.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to thank Commissioner Coulson for his leadership on this sensitive issue, and I'm very much in favor of regulating, seeing what we can do to regulate, to give us a buffer between properties and where guns are being fired in close proximity to other properties.
Thank you. Commissioner White?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for Chief Deputy Guard, if he's still on here.
Yes, he is.
Deputy Guard, incidents that Commissioner Perkins-Williams described where a gun was shot into an individual's home and it hit the chair. Now, that, even without this ordinance, that would have been a crime, correct?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And if I decide I want to target practice in my backyard, and, for example, my in-laws live right beside me, if I was being irresponsible and I shot over there and I hit their house or any of their property, that would also be charged as a crime, correct?
It would, but I think what you run into is your intent at that, that point. But again, I'm not a, I don't have a JD behind my name on, on that. But, yeah, I would think there'd be, would be charges levied based on severe negligence.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? I don't see any more hands. So what guidance do Commissioner Ward?
Yes, two, two thoughts. I know that there are a lot of people who live in, not very close proximity to their neighbors, like farmers or whatever, and many of them have areas on their farm that they do target practice or shooting skeet and such things as that. And maybe what we need to do is appoint a committee or a group to work with our attorney, maybe, to see if we could come up with an ordinance that would serve the purpose, that would protect those sorts of things that are going on in a safe manner to those things that are going on that are inappropriate and might cause damage or, or hurt to a neighbor. So I would recommend or hope that maybe our chair could appoint a committee of maybe two commissioners or one commissioner or a couple of people from the county office to just see what they could come up with and bring back to us.
So would you, what you're proposing, a committee form, and the other proposal would be to give the attorney instruction to come up with an ordinance to bring back to us, or you want to go the committee route? I see Commissioner Nunley's hand up.
A recommendation to bring back to us.
Okay. Commissioner Nunley, what are you proposing?
I'm sure, thank you. Yes, I was gonna, I was gonna second Mrs. Ward's suggestion that there be committee in concert with, with our legal counsel, Janice Gallagher, work on a proposal and bring it back to the commission, working with members of the community, making sure that we, if we do go this route, that we're really, we're drafting something that's really going to fit the bill and not overreach, and really hit, target the problem, not, not, not the legal and safe activities that are going on with firearms in our county.
Okay. I will take, I will take volunteers for that committee?
Should we first vote on the motion?
Well, she, suggestions, you want to put it in form of-
Well, I did, I did say I would like to make it in the form of a motion, and I think Chris seconded it.
Commissioner Coulson, do you have another question? Or you second? Chris is seconding it.
Well, wait, you asked whether it'd be volunteers. I'd like to volunteer for it, and I'll also go so far as to second it.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we compose a committee to bring back suggestions or to this commission on the discharging of firearms. Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick? Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLaughlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
All right. Well, Commissioner Coulson had volunteered already. Do we have any other volunteers? Okay, looks like Commissioner Coulson and Attorney Gallagher will be working on this and bringing, and, and the county manager.
Did I understand the desire for somebody from the community with the perspective of a gunfire, a shooter? That's not the right word. Somebody who likes to shoot guns in their yard? Do we need that perspective on the committee?
Commissioner Ward, you have a question?
Yes, I think that would be an addition that we should have, and maybe our chair could find someone in the community that might be willing, or maybe someone would call the volunteer.
A hobbyist, is that what you call it? All right. Why don't we let maybe Commissioner Coulson might have a suggestion on somebody? Commissioner Nunley, do you have another question or comment?
I was, I was just going to suggest that maybe we could reach out to some of the firearms instructors in the community that are licensed, that are actively educating gun owners. So that might be a good place to start, just a suggestion.
Good idea.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams, are you volunteering?
I wanted to ask the question.
All right, your question?
Will you have an, will this committee have an opportunity to receive comments, input, or comments from the general public? And how long is this committee going to look into it?
Commissioner Coulson, I, I don't really have a suggestion as to who that private person might be. I think it's a good idea to maybe think about what was just suggested, and maybe a concealed carry permit teacher. There are a number of them around the county, maybe we can get, you know, get one of them interested in it. But it's not just the, the danger so much as the, the scaring people, you know? That was one of the things that brought this thing to a head, is where I'm going to say, you know, some people are just darn mean, and they're angry with their neighbor for whatever reason, and so they know that they can shoot these guns in close proximity, and it scares the heck out of the neighbor, and they do it intentionally. And so that's part of what I, I think we need to address in this. And as far as dragging, you know, getting somebody from the community, I don't know how easy it'll be. It might be real easy, and it might not be easy at all. But as far as receiving comments, well, I would hope so.
You will have to, once the board agrees upon an ordinance, you'll have to advertise for a public hearing, have a public hearing on it. And if, if the board on the, if the vote of the board is not unanimous, that vote will have to come to a second reading at a subsequent meeting. So you'll definitely have the opportunity for public input.
Excellent. Okay. So where are we here?
Well, so I think you need to, you have a motion in the second to create this committee with Commissioner Coulson, myself, the county attorney, the community representative, and Commissioner Coulson had recommended possibly a concealed carry instructor, if you're agreement to that, Madam Chairwoman. I think you've just been voted on the motion.
Was the, it was already voted on and passed eight to one?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we just-
Yes, sorry, eight to one, that's right.
We move, we've moved forward, completing the committee, and then we'll set a time to meet, discuss, and bring back a proposed ordinance for consideration by the board, who will then set a public hearing to adopt.
Okay. All right, thank you. Commissioner White, you have a question? Oh, she put her hand down, so. All right. We'll now move to items for decision. And the first one is, is designation of a voting delegate for the NCAA Legislative Goals Conference, and I believe Commissioner Perkins-Williams and I will be attending. Commissioner Ward?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to designate our chair, Anne Huggins, to be our voting
Commissioner Albright?
I second-
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved in second that the chair will be the voting delegate for the Legislative Goals Conference. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to the next item, which is the Bethel ABC, uh, ABC store property donation, and we'll hear from our attorney.
Yes, we've received a letter from Phil Dixon, who is the attorney for the ABC Board, offering, um, the Bethel Old ABC Store to the county as a donation. You heard earlier in your meeting, a presentation from Dr. Gary Moore about the Bethel Youth Center and the activities that are going on there. Um, the ABC Board would like, um, has determined that the property itself, the building that they own and are currently leasing to Dr. Moore, is surplus property. And they would like to donate it to the county. And so the, um, item for your consideration this evening is whether or not the county desires to accept that donation of property from the ABC Store.
If I can add on to that, so then the, the, the second, the second step for this process would be the, I would not recommend the county have ownership of it and lease it to the Bethel, Bethel Youth Activity Center, but you put it up for an upset bid process to hopefully allow Dr. Moore's organization to take ownership of it and have long-term responsibilities for maintenance and utilities and upkeep.
And there's also a special provision within the law um, that allows us to donate it to, um, a nonprofit who is carrying out a public purpose so long as we, um, put that restriction in the deed itself. And so if that public purpose was not, um, being carried out, then ownership would revert back to the county. That still does require a resolution and an advertisement, but we may be able, um, if we find that they're carrying out a public purpose, um, avoid an upset bid process. So we may have two methods, um, to consider disposition of the property if the county desires to accept ownership for the purpose of, um, using one of those lawful methods.
So the, 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 the question is, uh, to, for this board, is to accept this property from the ABC Board, uh, as surplus? And then we would, uh, choose, uh, one of those options to, um, to, uh, give it to the, um, Bethel, uh, Youth Center?
Correct.
Uh, Commissioner, I don't know which hand was first, Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Correct.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I would like to make a motion that we, uh, accept the donation of the former ABC Store.
Commissioner Ward? I mean, I'm, uh...
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second that, I'm sorry, commi-, uh, Madam Clerk?
You still, you still have, um, Commissioner Perkins-Williams hand up and Commissioner McLawhorn?
Uh, we have other hands up. Commissioner Perkins-Williams, do you have a question?
I have a question, since Dr. Moore is still on the, um, on, uh, attending this meeting. Do you have any, uh, input into this, uh, hearing, the discussion that's been held tonight? What, how, what is your standing on this conversation?
Dr. Moore, are you there? We have him on the, um, Zoom call. I'm not sure if he's stepped away from the, his computer or... Dr. Moore?
So, uh, Commissioner Perkins-Williams, your question again to Dr. Moore?
He heard this discussion, and I was wa- wondering about his position or input as it relates to this.
I can say that I spoke to Dr. Moore this week, and, um, I, I believe that the actions of the board, whether upset bid process or the motion that Ms. Gallagher mentioned about donating to a nonprofit is consistent with the, the goals of his organization.
That's what I understand.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, there he is.
Thank you.
That is correct.
There was somebody saying, uh, who was?
Um, you, you had, um, we had Mayor Perkins-Williams from Bethel Ward, but I think they both spoke.
Commissioner Ward, did you have a, you had your hand up, you put it down. Do you still have a question?
They have a motion.
Okay.
I thought a motion was on the floor.
Yes, okay, so it's been moved in second that we, um... What are we gonna do?
Accept the donation.
That we accepted, uh, we accept the donation from the ABC, uh, Board. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, now, I believe we are at, um, CARES Act funding, Brian Barnett?
Uh, Madam Chairwoman and Board Commissioners, um, as you all may recall, the, for the CARES Act that the county received over the summer as part of the billion-dollar, uh, trillion-dollar plan that was passed by the, uh, federal government, um, our funds are set to end, um, on December 30th, um, which is a couple of weeks, couple of days from now. Um, what I have in front of you now is a plan to revise our plan that we submitted back in, we actually made, we made a revision back in, uh, August and once in the middle of October. Um, this last revision would get us through the final stretch of the last few days of, of our spending. Um, this reflects our spending from March 1st through, uh, December 14th. Um, this allows us the ability to match up what we have spent in our plan, essentially, uh, an amendment to the budget that we set, that you all set for our CARES Fund spending. Um, the main change from what was submitted back in the middle of October until now is, uh, funds to account for our folks who are out on leave due to, um, several items related to the coronavirus, whether they've had it or were they assisting somebody who has had it. But mainly, it keeps everything within what was originally set. Your main objective was for testing, um, P P E supplies, that, that type of spending all has been in line. We, we allocated, uh, almost all of our funds to our municipal partners who asked for it. But this just basically puts our plan in line with our current spending so that we stay on track as set forth by, uh, the folks in Raleigh. So I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
The vaccine, uh, cost, does this include the cost or will, uh, will there be an extension to include the cost of the vaccine for those who wants to take it?
At this point in time, the, the C R F CARES Fund, uh, does not include any funding for the vaccine. Uh, when this was passed back in March, um, I don't think they had any intention for these funds to be used for vaccines. But at this point in time, uh, we could not use these particular funds for any type of vaccine or vaccine-type program.
I believe the vaccines are free, aren't they?
I, I, I'm not aware of any funding as, in terms of administering a vaccine program, um, or how that's gonna come down. I think Dr. Silvernell probably could be better at explaining that than I am at this point in time. But on, on the CARES Act funding, uh, we cannot use these particular funds for any type of vaccine program.
Okay.
Well, I do, I've heard from other meetings that there is a cost involved with the funds. And, um, the stimulus check is not gonna cover those because the stimulus, uh, check doesn't cover the, the mortgages and the rent payments and all like that. So there will be a strain on people, uh, who have low income, uh, poverty-level people. So, um, are you planning to look into that, Mr. Manager?
But, uh, again, I, I don't believe there, there's any cost to an individual receiving the vaccine. The only cost the county government may, may incur would be helping in the administration of giving those shots and any administrative paperwork and such. And I, I believe there may be some funding coming down to help us with that. But I don't believe there's, whether you're low-income, middle-income, or high-income, I don't believe there's any cost to getting that actual shot. Just like today, you can go to Biden and get a COVID test at no cost, no matter what your income is.
I thought that's what, thought Silvernell said, no cost. Anyway, um... Commissioner Ward?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the CARES Act funds revisions.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved in second that we approve the, the, um, revised CARES Act funding plan. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will now move to the formulation, uh, of the pit county Human Relation Commission. But, uh, some time ago, we formed a committee, uh, to, uh, look into, um, establishing a Human Relation Commission. And so we're here to make that report tonight, uh, Mr. Manager.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, we have, um, before you tonight, a recommendation regarding this matter. You have in the agenda packet, the committee is pointed by the former Chairman McLawhorn, the members of that committee, you have a recommendation. You have the process laid out of which the committee worked over a series of months, getting input from the State Human Relations Commission, examining models of, um, Human Relation Commission entities across the state. Um, the legal department, um, did some additional research and came up with a final proposed model, both of the ordinance and the bylaws, which the, the, um, committee reviewed and added, um, input into and are now unanimously recommending to you for your consideration. We do have on the, um, in the meeting tonight, um, Keith Cooper and Havencio Rico Peralta, who are two members of that committee. And, um, Madam Chairwoman, if you wanted them to briefly make any comments or just hold them at bay, however you would like to, um, handle that.
Uh, yes, we have. Keith?
Okay, if we can get our P O office to, um...
So he was just kicked off and he's trying to get back to us.
Okay.
Okay, Havencio on?
Yeah. Bring Mr. Peralta, um, unmuted. Okay.
Uh, yes, Madam Chair and members of, well, the pit county council, uh, thank you for allowing me to briefly, uh, say, and, yes, amplify this, uh, effort and initiative that has been going on with, uh, with the Human Relations, um, Council proposal that, uh, Mr. Keith has been working on for so many years and other members of this group. Um, I think this is, uh, a long, long, long time has been going on, and I think it's due. And I think I, I'm praising the, this initiative with benefit our county and that will benefit our communities. And I just briefly want to say that, uh, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, implement these human relations, um, i- in the county and, and also will allow us to bring opportunities to, to, uh, do some wonderful things in, in, in this county that, uh, is, is best you to have a council of this magnitude. So thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the members of the board.
Thank you for, for serving. Do we have Keith, is Keith back on?
I do not see you up there yet.
Okay.
I can check him back in some circumstances. He's on the phone, attempting to come back into queue. If you want to maybe take some commissioner comments and we'll come back to him.
Okay, Commissioner Nunley? We'll come back to, uh, to Keith when he gets back on.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I was going to, um, m- make a, a motion to approve it with two slight, um, additions and modifications, um, but just, but to approve the ordinance as presented, um, but with the addition of, um, raising that number to 21, uh, so that we could add two important constituent communities, um, with regards to inclusiveness. Uh, one being the LGBTQ, um, community, that we add a representative from that community and also a representative from the Asian-American community. We have a large population here, so I think it would be beneficial, uh, to this commission to have two, um, two members from those, uh, those constituencies. And also, um, just to add perhaps language, um, um, just in membership that we give preference, not of course a, a requirement, but the preference that we appoint members that are actively engaged in inclusivity work, um, in other organizations in our community, such as N double A C P. Um, um, you know, i- i- any other group, N C Civil, that's doing on-the-ground work that we, that we, um, you know, that we put maybe in our, in our founding document a preference for, um, looking at those folks. Um, but, but certainly not excluding others. And that, that would be, that was gonna be my motion, that we accept it with, um, with those two, um, small modifications.
Okay. Right, I believe Keith is back on, so Keith?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am, I'm, I'm back on. I was, I don't know what happened, but anyway, I'm back.
All right, you're, you're, you're up to speak.
Okay, okay, one second. Ms. Huggins?
Yes.
Um, I, I just want to say that, uh, I'm very, uh, I, I want to, um, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. Um, I just want to say that I have, uh, campaigned for the, uh, formation of a Human Relations Council, uh, for over 20 years to, uh, 'cause I believe that this is a, a great council to promote peace, reconciliation, and fruitful social interactions among the citizenry. Um, in, uh, 1998, then, uh, County Commissioner Farnie Moore, uh, bless his heart, he's deceased now, uh, he encouraged me to pursue this, you know, in conjunction with other interested parties. Uh, commonalities of interest. Uh, embryonic... I'm an hours of interest and bretony. Very briefly, I am thankful certainly for the work of the committee, has met at least, what, three or four, five times or so. And that particular committee did a wonderful job in terms of providing the framework for the, a foresaid human relations commission to encourage diversity and foster an environment where all municipalities within Pitt County would have a seat at the table and solve problems. Such a commission would be invaluable and proactive in dealing with possible social issues, unrest, future, and promoting tolerance and goodwill for all, as the chairman ushered in some very vital furtherance of a human relations commission. Got enough acknowledgement for that. I remember that same year, 1998, his name came up that year when I was at the home of Commissioner Farnie Moore. And he was looking to perhaps appoint Melvin to the ABC Board. He asked me, do you know this guy named Melvin McLawhorn? And I said, yes, I know Melvin McLawhorn, he's a pretty nice guy. But then, of course, 20 years or so later, here we are with this same individual helping us with this deed of humanitarianism. And I also want to thank Chair, Madam Chair, you for your steadfast efforts to keep the fire burning. I remember when I spoke with you about this, within the past couple of years, you told me that you were very interested in pursuing discussions about this with various parties, and you were true to your word. Finally, I want to thank Havencio Peralta, Rich Zek, and give kudos to the tireless efforts of County Attorney Janice Gallagher and County Manager Scott Elliott. I believe, Ms. Huggins, that Farnie Moore and said, well done, Mel, and Keith and all others to pay the way County Human Relations Commission and Human Relations at this point serves as both a validation and a vindication of over 20 years of relentless efforts. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Keith, I don't believe you were on, but Commissioner Nunnely offered an addition to the number on the board. I don't know if you heard that or not, but instead of 19-member board, he offered to increase it to 21-member board.
So he offered a suggestion or part of his motion to have a representative of the LGBTQ community as well as the Asian American. So the, you'd have 10 municipal appointees, and then you'd have 11 other county. Also, he wanted to add language in the documents to memorialize it for preference for appointees or for members who are actively engaged in inclusive, inclusiveness work.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I would, I wanted to second Chris's motion when he made it.
Okay.
And I call for the question so we can vote if that's appropriate.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Commissioner McLawhorn, you have a question or comment?
Yes, Commissioner Nunnely also mentioned, Madam Chair, that the NAACP as a representative, I think that would be in keeping with what we're trying to move in forward very positively. So I think that that should, so they may be increasing that to a membership of 13. But I do think the NAACP, and Chris did mention that, that should be included in that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, so just to clarify the numbers, I have a proposed board of 21, 10 being seats dedicated to municipalities, 11 being seats with particular attributes to represent the nature of the community. One of those seats, which would be appropriate for the NAACP representing the African American community.
Okay. All right, I believe we're ready to vote. It's been moved in second that we make those changes to the proposed formation of the Human Relation Commission.
And if I could just clarify, that Commissioner Nunnely's motion in the second include both the ordinance with those revisions and the bylaws?
Yes.
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 Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
No.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to two.
Okay. Lively, all right, we're at reappointment to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council.
Yes, Madam Chairman, woman, we have a reappointment, two actually, one for Karen Harrington and another for Mike Taylor.
Entertain a motion to reappoint, to appoint those. Commissioner Nunnely?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ward?
Second it. Did you hear me?
Yes, it's been moved in second that we appoint those two.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what I'm voting on. I dropped my phone away and...
It's the reappointment of...
Oh, okay, all right, I know who you mean, all right, I'm for it, yes, sorry.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We were moved to number six, reappointment to the Pitt Community Schools, Pitt County Community Schools and Recreation Advisory Council. Mr. Manager?
Your recommendation for the reappointment of Amy Hademan and Tony Parker?
Entertain a motion to appoint them. Commissioner Ward?
We'd like to make a motion to report Ms. Hademan and Mr. Parker.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second that we reappoint Parker and Hademan to the, to that board. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the reappointment to the ABC Board, Ms. County Manager.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, we have a recommendation from Adam Sullivan to reappoint Chairwoman Amy Floyd Huggins to the ABC Board.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Make a motion to reappoint.
Commissioner Ward?
Second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we appoint your stewardess to that board. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And then we'll have the reappointment to the Pitt County Child Prevention Team.
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, we have a recommendation to reappoint Mr. Edward Suggs. He served an excellent number of terms, so this should be an exception to your appointment policy.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Make a motion to appoint.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in second that we appoint him to that board. Madam Clerk?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, but you've got one more appointment.
Oh, did I?
Number nine.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll move to the appointment of, reappointment to the Pitt County Board of Adjustment. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Madam Chairwoman, and Commissioners, on this item, you have the Pitt County Board of Adjustment, you have two alternate members, Ashley Moore and Johnny Piner. Ashley Moore is representing the South of the River area. She is interested in being appointed to the full-time position, South of the River. Johnny Piner is also an alternate who's interested in being appointed to vacancy North of the River. If you appoint Ashley Moore and Johnny Piner to the two permanent positions, we'll then need to seek applicants for the alternate positions. But right now, it's not the request to appoint Ashley Moore and Johnny Piner, and then to find additional members.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Ashley Moore and Johnny Piner to these seats and wait until we get a recommendation for the other two.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we will appoint them, to move them up to...
Can I cast a clarification of James? Are you seeking a, another South of the River permanent member as well?
Yes, sir, we actually have three that are rotating off, so we've had two alternates moving up, but we still have one voting member that needs to be appointed as well, besides the two alternates.
Do we need to...
So if, so you have a list of potential applicants for that South of the River voting member in the packet for you to consider from, or if you want us to bring it back, we can bring it back. James, do you know which of these folks are South of the River that are...
Madam Clerk might be able to clarify, but on this, Mr...
We have two applicants on file, one that resides north of the river, who is Gilbert, I'm sorry, Rita Jackson Gilbert, and one that resides south of the river, who is Michael Bridgers.
So there's one eligible for that remaining slot.
So you could appoint that person, or you could ask us to advertise and seek additional applicants. It's up to you to award what you want to do for that South of the River slot.
Commissioner White?
Can we advertise and get some additional applicants?
Yes, we can.
Do I need to make a motion on that?
Let's appoint the, the two first.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Ward, second by Commissioner McLawhorn to appoint Ashley Moore to a regular seat and Johnny Piner to a regular seat.
Okay.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
And if motion is not necessary for us to advertise the remaining one?
No, so we don't, we don't need a motion to advertise for the next one, to do additional advertising. Yeah, all right.
We are, yeah, you ready for me to...
Have a motion?
Yes, and before you do that, if you'd like, if I'll just clarify the board, and I should have when it happened on your Human Relations Commission, since that was not unanimous, that will have to come back at the next meeting for a second read, since it is an ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Just to say that, and then, yes, if you have a motion to go into closed session with a second, then I'll give you your basis.
Okay. Commissioner McLawhorn?
I have motion to go into closed session.
Commissioner Ward?
Second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved in second, Madam Clerk?
It is, do you want to read it first?
Yes.
It has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143318.11A3, under attorney-client privilege to consult with an attorney employed by the board in order to preserve that attorney-client privilege, and also under 143318.11A1 to prevent the disclosure of confidential information.
Madam?
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McLawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunnely?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.